Is seven oh six on sixth of November. Where the planning commission meeting come to order. Have the roll call, please.
Chair Solom.
Here.
Vice Chair Benyon.
Here.
Commissioner Dahl.
Here.
Commissioner Halsted.
Oh, here.
Commissioner Strauss Boyd.
Here.
Commissioner Gilmer.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Here.
Planning Manager Baliski.
Here.
Planning Assistant Spiets.
Here.
We have our next meeting scheduled for December fourth. And could I have a show of hands for the people that will be able to make it on the fourth of December? Three. It's unanimous, so we will meet again on the fourth of December.
Can I ask if we'll do Christmas exchange? Or will we?
Uh, I have the Christmas presents already, so I think, I think we should do an exchange.
Okay.
Uh.
For the new people, do? I'd be happy to. Typically, in the first December that we have a gift exchange, we buy some small item, usually around $10, I think is kind of where we state. Um, and then you'll exchange it with each other. Um, and so you'll bring one for every person. And some people do, yeah. Handmade things or whatever you're thinking. Um, and um, we, we have in the past given also gifts to city people, but they can't receive it. So what they do is that they actually share it with the rest of the folks in their office. But if you do choose to give them something, a good whatever would be really a nice gift for them to be able to set out to share. colleagues, candy or whatever. And you don't have to participate if you don't choose.
Each person brings one gift for each person.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Got it.
Should have turned your microphone on.
I probably should have. Good, good point there.
You want to go back and do it again?
No.
Okay. So we have our meeting set. We have the call on a gift exchange set. Approve of the minutes. The chair will sustain a motion to approve the minutes. They'll move. There a second? Moved and seconded. For one of the minutes, uh, all the, one, one correction. Um, so on the next meeting call, there was item three on the minutes. Um, it says, uh, by common consent, the commissioners agreed to hold the next meeting on December sixth, two thousand and twenty, twenty-three. That should be November sixth, twenty twenty-four. Make that correction. Any other corrections, additions, deletions? Call the question. Those in favor approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Okay, as the ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Public comment? None. Public hearing, none. All continuing business, historical preservation and cultural resources element.
Good evening, Commissioners. Planning Manager Baliski here to talk to you about the updates to the historic preservation and cultural resources element. Um, thank you for your patience as we pulled this together. We had a number of, um, pretty heavy things going on at the office this past month and as well as a number of trainings. So, um, thank you for not meeting in October and giving us the grace and time to get this done. Um, so essentially this update, it actually cuts out a lot of the information because it was moved over to the Parks Trails, Recreation and Open Space Plan that you guys were heavily involved in over the past two years, particularly the cultural arts element. And so really our focus here was one, to update it to be formatted consistent with the other elements to provide that regulatory context. Update the history to, I suppose, be more respectful of, of the tribes and, and the relationships we have with them now. Reorganize the chapter so the flow of it made a bit more sense and then update the, the graphics associated with it. Um, the formatting was updated to be consistent with the community development element. And really the goals and policies weren't changed other than the ones that were removed to go to the parks plan. So hopefully this isn't a major update, um, but curious to hear your thoughts, any corrections, changes, things that need clarification. Please let us know the packet number as you're pointing out anything that you would like to discuss.
Didn't realize Bonnie Lake had such a history. Questions, additions, corrections, clarifications? Yes, Brad.
Uh, well, so on page thirty-nine of one thirteen, um, well, there's just, uh, there's all this like phonetically spelled, you know, the, the tribes, the Indian tribe names and I, I just, is that?
That's the southern, southern Lishitseed spelling. So it's the, um, the northern Lishitseed is kind of like north of Lake Washington in general. The southern Lishitseed is the southern Puget Sound tribes. And so that is the spelling associated with their
Really?
native dialect tribal name. We just thought that was kind of neat.
Not even close. The, I was just wondering, do we bastardize the names that much that, uh, you know, they're, they're just not even close to the original?
Yes.
I guess so. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's the only question I had. I thought that everything looked really nice in the, in the packet stuff. I was really, I was really, uh, nice to be educated, uh, all the history and stuff from, from the city of Bonnie Lake.
Yes.
Yeah, I also really liked it. And I liked how, um, more neutral the history was because, you know, both sides are.
Valid perspectives.
Yeah, exactly. And so it's not just from the winner's side or the European side. So I liked, I really liked the, the way you guys changed it around, but I thought it was really concise and clear like the other ones have been. So I think you guys did a really good job. Um, switching up the, the writing and the formatting. So, good job.
Comments, questions? At this time, uh, we have a motion that we can use. Somebody will make that motion. I've got it right here. So I move to recommend that the final review draft of the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resources Element proceeds to City Council. You have no changes. Is there a second to the motion?
Again.
Motion is made and seconded. Additions, corrections? No. All those, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Those. The ayes have it and it goes forward to council. Good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Definitely a team effort. All right. So, Commissioner, are you ready for this next item? Okay. Um, so this item is a, a very small component of the mobility element that we are working on with our consultant SCJ. Um, as part of that, we were taking a look at the various, uh, elements and scoring matrices within the document. This particular one has a standard point component as well as a council weighting component. So you'll see that those columns are blank in this item. But essentially, um, this scoring matrix is used to prioritize sidewalk improvements and other pedestrian improvements in the city. However, it makes up a proportionally very small component of our capital improvement program. Um, typically the amount of budget available for these is around $250,000 a year, which is quite a small stretch of sidewalk. And so with that in mind, really you're looking at maybe one to two projects a year at most. And so we wanted to simplify this matrix to make it easy for staff, uh, easier for staff to, um, do the scoring, run the model, uh, move things forward rather than having to do a lot of extra manual analysis to get to a conclusion for something that wasn't, um, the bulk of our, our CIP. So I provided you with the proposed update and scoring schema as well as the one from the 2015 comprehensive plan. So you can compare the two. Really what Director Sullivan is interested in is, does it make sense? Is it missing something? Is there something we should put back in? Should the scores be adjusted? What are your thoughts on the updates to the matrix?
None?
I sort of, I sort of question. Okay, which metrics is the new one? Is it the first one or the second one?
It's the first one.
Okay.
The one formatted like our other, other.
Yeah, has like the green and like, okay.
Yep.
I was just looking to see which one. I thought it was interesting that, um, it was that pedestrian and bicycle crash areas have a high priority for sidewalks. I thought that was an interesting addition. I wouldn't have thought of that.
I have a question. So as I look through this and, and the second or the middle column with the council weight factor, Mm-hmm. are they using the point value to weigh that or do they have a separate criteria for, for what their factor is?
So, um, depending on where you guys land in any changes, Director Sullivan will be taking this to council for them to say, they can add in a multiplier essentially.
Right.
So if they feel like four points, uh, for the public road classification, um, on a primary or secondary road, that's not something they are particularly focused on. They could give it a multiplier of point five or one. If it's something that's really important to them, like locations that are getting crashes, they could add a multiplier of two or three, essentially bumping that up to a total point availability of twelve or eighteen. So it, it lets them kind of skew the scale for things that are priorities based on what they're hearing from their constituents. So that's not what we're sitting, setting today. We're really talking about kind of that base value and whether those proportions make sense. As well as whether the categories make sense.
Yeah, I guess for myself, the one at the bottom falling is a bigger criteria than some of the other ones. Um, you know, from a, from a standpoint, so are, are they safe? Are they even? Do they have, you know, um, uneven surfaces? Have we allowed tree trunks or, you know, tree roots to, to, you know? To me, that seems like it should be a higher value than some of the, the public road type things. But, and again, if they have, like, for example, in four-ten where we have bicycle lanes, for example, they shouldn't be riding on the sidewalk. Um, and again, for example, coming down there off of Angeline, they actually constructed the stairs so that they could use their bicycles and there's a little track on there for them to do that. So, you know, what I'd like to do is encourage bicyclists to use the appropriate lanes as opposed to being using those lanes which are more suited for pedestrians and/or vehicles. Um, I, I know from my standpoint, you know, we have an awful lot of people that are riding their bikes in the streets, um, where there are bicycle things, but they're also not paying attention to traffic laws. And so again, those are some of the concerns that I have. I don't have anything against the bicyclists. I just want them to, to adhere to the pedestrian, excuse me, to the vehicular, um, requirements. So, and again, wearing, you know, high visibility, you know, have the right lighting, things of that sort would be of a really great advantage, especially on these nights where you can't see them until you're nearly on top of them, which scares me as a driver. So, I mean, that's my feedback, but I would see falling as a much higher criteria on there than it would be for some of the others, but that's my opinion for that.
So I want to make a clarification, although I don't think it changes the value or the, um, really where your comments are going, that it should have a higher point ranking. It's failing, not falling. So we have a level of standard, uh, level of service standard and I, it's hard to, to see when you're not zoomed in for that particular font. So I was like, oh, wait. Basically what that means is we have a level of service standard for our roads, for our, um, like the ADA ramps at intersections for sidewalks. And so that does include things like, uh, tree limbs that are pushing up the concrete, um, too big of a lip, uh, trip hazards. Um, what's going on with the, the pavement surface itself and there's kind of an evaluation system that goes along with that. So if it is failing, it's having those things occurring. We're still getting to the same output.
Okay.
Point of what you were saying, but you're saying a higher point value than one. What would the commission like to see it bumped up to? We have point values ranging up to six on here.
See, in my world, it'd pay at least between a three and a five. You know, I don't know if that's four, but at least higher than, than a one. But that's my opinion on, one opinion.
And that would be for the bicyclists?
For the pedestrians walking on the sidewalks. Yeah.
And, and the bicyclists coming by.
Yes.
You'd see a three or a four.
Their head nods. Is there consensus or a preference between a three and a four? Could the chair take a straw poll on preference between the two?
Uh, show me a hand if you want three. Show me a hand if you want four.
You've got it.
Can I ask a question? So, um, like what's if, I don't know if this is going to make sense, but the failing sidewalk, that would be a place where there is a sidewalk versus scoring an area that needs a sidewalk that does not have a sidewalk?
Correct.
So we're prefer, like, so we would be putting more points on an area where there's already a sidewalk that it's failing over points where there's not a sidewalk where there should be.
Potentially, yes.
Potentially. Okay. That's the distinction then. Okay.
Yeah. One question. Um, so it looks like the school walking area was taken off. Is that into local centers or is that just not included on the new one?
We were discussing that in terms of, I, and I don't think this phraseology or terminology is really correct yet, the governmental facility. Okay. So within a eighth mile or quarter mile of a governmental building. And to finish up with what Commissioner Halsted was pointing to though, on the flip side, filling a system gap has two or four points. So they're both there, just in different categories for, for that one. Um, I would welcome alternative phrasing to kind of address city buildings, special purpose district buildings. So that would be like, um, hospital, uh, library, schools, that kind of thing. Um, the fire district is an example of a special purpose district. But other term we could use there that would make that clear that that was intended for schools and.
Why we're quiet today?
Well, it's a tough one for, for old Chair Solom.
I remember back when I taught, the distance a student could walk was no more than a mile. Had to have sidewalks and such for that.
Is that still current?
I don't think you have to have sidewalks for walking to school. I don't know that that's a requirement.
The fallback seems to be using the bus for everything.
So school districts, it, it kind of varies between the school districts, so I'm, I'm not going to speak for all of them, but um, in state law, there is a safe route to school. Um, provisions that has to do with prioritizing sidewalks within a certain distance from schools, especially schools where students will walk. The distance that schools will bus really has a lot more to do these days with how many bus drivers they have available. There has certainly been a shortage the last few years. Um, and so that has changed the distance that they are willing to pick children up from. They try not to have children walk when, because they do pay attention to areas where there are sidewalks or walking paths or areas available and not have kids walking in ditches. So they do map all of that. I haven't had much conversation with the school district here, but the Capitol Facilities Manager at Pewalup, um, really paid a lot of attention to that and mapping that out and, and providing comment on new proposals to make sure there was adequate access or bus stops for students. So there are ways that we can build that in, particularly for subdivision applications and other really large applications. For smaller projects, there's not as much of a nexus for us to ask for pedestrian facilities. But that is fairly baked into bigger project planning.
You know, there's also a, it depends on what roads they cross and if there's safe crossing for those roads. Because if there's not, then they will bus. And no, that's a priority. Um, I have an idea, but I don't know if this really changes it. It's just, um, governmentally owned buildings? Because I think people know that schools are owned by the government and hospitals, uh, not hospitals, uh, like fire departments. And I know it's stupid because governmental facilities that should totally cover it, but I don't know. I think it's just, that's, for my mind, I would understand what that means a little bit easier, but that's I'm not a wordsmith, but.
And Planning Manager, I want to thank you for the clarification. I was, I was thinking falling. I knew it was failing, but I was like, I went straight to falling on failing sidewalks. So my apology for purpose. Thank you.
You're fine. Permit owned. I think what's odd too is you have some public services by semi-private entities, right? So ESE comes to mind or the Cascade Water Alliance, if they have a facility here, they're kind of a amalgam.
Or public facilities or public buildings?
Publicly owned?
Yeah, like government and public publicly owned buildings. I don't know.
Yeah. But then I was also thinking about things like the urgent care. So that's a private facility, but it's a pretty important one to be able to get to.
Yeah. I don't know.
So do we want to limit, if we limit that scope to government buildings, then we're potentially
Yeah.
leaving out facilities like that that do have a
And does public, and does buildings then prohibit including like a park and ride?
Hmm. Yeah.
Because there's not per se a building there, but it's certainly a public facility.
Yeah, that's true.
Transit center. Yeah.
Public service.
I guess, I don't know, could we add something to the bottom of it that would just say, like, governmental facilities also includes hospitals, libraries, um, schools, et cetera. Just to clarify that they're all encompassed in that one. I don't know.
I like that.
Instead of putting it in the title. I don't know. Just a suggestion.
Um, so I'm going to try to compile everybody's thoughts. So I'm hearing maybe a title like public service facility with a footnote that this includes uh, hospitals, fire stations, um, city facilities, libraries, transit facilities.
Senior center?
Senior center, et cetera. Okay, I, I can work with that.
Okay.
Director Sullivan will probably wordsmith it more, but I think that's a good start.
He does a good job at wordsmithing. Will we, will we see this again?
Would you like to see it again? Well, let me, let me back up. You will see it again as part of the draft mobility element. Right now, I don't have a good sense of timing. I'm guessing January, maybe February, we'll have that chapter to you. That chapter needs to be done before we can finish the community, uh, services and facilities element, at which point the rest of it is kind of the introduction, the implementation chapter, et cetera. Um, so yes, you will see it again before it goes out for the public review draft, but after council gives their weighting factor.
I'd like to also, on page ninety-three of one hundred and thirteen, so bullet number two, it says, miss links within the existing sidewalk newt work.
This is the current plan and we will be correcting things. I promise.
I like newts, but I didn't know that they, you know, did anything with science. Anyway, thank you.
Wouldn't that be fun? A bunch of newts with public works vests and flag your signs.
You see a little newt in prints in the concrete, you know, in the sidewalk to show you what's going on. Yeah.
Like that.
I do too, you know, follow the newts, you know, it's.
It's our new mascot for Bonnie Lake.
That it?
For this item from me, yes. Is that everyone from the commissioners? Everything from the commissioners?
Will they go to the order then? Correspondents? Um, staff comments?
Um, all right. So the Development Services Team is starting to take a look at our existing applications, materials, website, forms, checklists, all of that in order to get us closer to compliance with Senate Bill fifty-two ninety. Um, we will at some point need to bring code amendments to you. Uh, the state law goes into effect regardless of whether or not we adopt our own local amendment. So hopefully we can get those done, but part of that is going to depend on what's happening with, uh, Director Sullivan. You may have noticed that his position was posted. The mayor, um, while in, in, uh, his seat on council, was very challenged by the idea of simply appointing somebody and having, going through the process to ensure the city got the, the best candidate for the position. And so that has been in process. They decided to go on ahead and do it, uh, this winter. So they're anticipating making a final decision by the end of the year. So he's been holding off on code amendments like this just to respect that process. So hopefully we'll be able to get those done early next year, but certainly no promises. Regardless, this will supersede our local code and our local procedures. So as an FYI, I've provided, um, the Senate bill for you. So you can see what was changed. This was, I believe I've mentioned a couple of times, the first major update to uh, thirty-six seventy B in the revised code of Washington in quite some time. Um, the biggest changes, I think, for the city of Bonnie Lake really have to do around how we calculate clock days. But it also puts a lot of onus on the local community to ensure that our checklist and our forms are very clear about what we need so that we are getting as complete and accurate of applications as possible to allow us to process them. The other component of this is it really reduces the timeline. So previously, all applications got a one hundred and twenty day review period. So once we determined it was complete, we had one hundred and twenty days of active time to process an application. Now it really depends on the type of application. So building permits and that kind of thing have the shortest clock. I want to say it's around sixty-five days. I'm sure I could double check in here, but I'm not going to in the interest of time. Smaller land use permits that are not as intensive are kind of in a mid-range around, oh, I want to say around eighty to ninety days. And then, um, things that require a public hearing are given the most time. Cities can adopt longer time periods by ordinance, but until you do that, you are stuck with what is in the thirty-six seventy B. Um, and so we are doing what we can, uh, kicking off actually tomorrow night to start going through those documents and try to make updates to improve it, recognizing it's going to be a very iterative and recognizing it's going to be a very iterative and incremental process. So as we work on that, if you are feeling industrious and want to take a look at our website, we're happy to point things out to you and, and get your feedback on them. Or if you've gone through the process yourself and have feedback to give us, we'd certainly welcome that, too. Our goal is to really go towards more plain language and not be scared of it being long, but be more focused on it being very clear what folks need to do. So Kennedy, did you have any thoughts to add to that? Nope. Lauren is dragging us along, and we will get there. So anyway, that's what we're working on, particularly over the next couple of months. And that's what I have.
Commissioner, comment? None? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second?
Again.
Made, motion made and seconded. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thank you. Can we get a group shot here, too?